Clay County Commission to Order. All with that, when you are prepared, Mr. Administrator, please lead us in our invocation.
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for the blessings of today. We thank you for the bright sunshine that we're all enjoying. We thank you also for the beauty of the fall season, another indication of your constant presence in our lives. We ask that you be with us today as we gather and deliberate. We ask all this in Jesus' blessed name.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. So we are proud of this thing which is sacred. When I mention it under the law, it is visible. The liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Melty.
Here.
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this afternoon's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of today's agenda. Is there any discussion? Are there any additions, deletions, or any other alterations that anyone would like to see?
No, thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next scheduled meeting for the commission will take place on Wednesday, November the 10th, a business session that will begin at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you. Brings us to honorary resolutions. There aren't unlisted for today. Under discussion items, we have one item, that is Emergency Rental Assistance Program. It is the E-RAP program. And I believe, Mr. Administrator, the auditor, the county auditor, will be kicking us off on this discussion.
Yes, correct. Auditor Hurlberg is at the podium.
Please proceed whenever you're ready.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. I just wanted to take some time today and, number one, update you, bring you up to speed on our Emergency Rental Assistance Program, both programs 1.0 and 2.0, as well as, you know, let you know about some recent, you know, developments within the programs, from some news you've received from the United States Treasury, and really seek your input and direction as the commission for how we move forward with these programs. So that's really the purpose of this discussion here. So briefly, I want to give kind of a, you know, large background so we can know, again, just to remind where we've come from and where we are. So we learned early in the new year, after the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021 passed in December last year, of any jurisdiction that had over 200,000 residents would be eligible for an emergency rental assistance program. The payments would go to tenants for, I'm sorry, to landlords for tenants facing rental arrears, utility arrears because of COVID. And so that would have to be documented, and then if eligible and under 80% of the area median income, they could get assistance to the landlords to assist with that, because the pandemic obviously caused a lot of people to lose work, fall behind. So we learned of that. We decided as a county back then to jump on that program, and instead of having the state disperse funds for our citizens, do that in a way that worked with Clay County nonprofits and move in a, you know, more efficient method. And so as a result, we did that. We got about $3.6 million, 90% program funds, 10% administrative funds, so essentially $3.3 million for program funds of 1.0. The American Rescue Plan Act came along and passed, and it gave a 2.0 program. We're allocated up to another, you know, $2.8 million, but we have only received 40% of that, so we currently only have about $1 million, and only 979,000 of that is for the program funds, because that is 85% program fund, 15% administrative split. So just wanted to give you that broad overview. So where are we now here? We stood up a program from scratch, something that's never been done before by the county, to give such direct assistance like that, thanks to our nonprofits, United Way helping us stand up that program, and a technology provider. We stood that up in about a month's time through February, launched in March. Six months later, as of today, November 3rd, 2021, we are at $2,834,282 spent, all out of 1.0. That represents 86.5% of our 1.0 program. There was a target deadline at the end of September to have 65% spent in 1.0, and we met that. But I'll say we met it rather barely, okay? It was pretty close. But we did meet it, and in fact, we actually did lead, though. We led the state. An article came out from KCUR this weekend that the state of Missouri is rather behind for their assistance dollars at 18% as of the end of September. St. Louis County had spent 71%. Jackson County was at 69%. Green County, 61%. Jefferson County, 24%. We actually led all the counties that got funds in Missouri by being at, at the end of September, 75%. Of course, we received a lot less because we have less citizens, but we did lead every county in Missouri. Kansas City had spent all of its 1.0 funds, so really the region, Kansas City Metro, is leading the state in that respect. So I'm well pleased from that regard, but when we look at 2.0 and 1.0 combined, we really still have half a million from 1.0, about a million from 2.0, so $1.5 million And really, really, the time comes now of what we conserve to do. So I mentioned there was a reallocation process at the end of September, and we met our deadline. So now, the U.S. Treasury Department has come to us and said, would you like to request money, more money, and how much MHDC, the state of Missouri, has offered to redistribute their funds without us having to go to Treasury, just doing it voluntarily, so that the state wouldn't have to give back any funds. I learned on a call just before this at 1:00 that Jackson County and Kansas City are requesting $15 million more each. Certainly, there's a higher need, and again, they got a lot more than us in the beginning. All this to say, it's my opinion, just seeing how, on a weekly basis, on a reporting basis, compliant, compliance basis, I think it wouldn't be prudent for us to ask for more funds. And the reason is this, is that we have $1.5 million more, so the program doesn't shut down now if we say no for now. We have a deadline at the end of March where we have to have 50% of 2.0 expended, or we have to give money back to the U.S. Treasury. And that, from what I can tell, includes the total grant award from 1.0 and 2.0. So if we ask for more money of 1.0, now we have to spend 50% of that and our $1 million in 2.0. You know, we've only spent $2.8 million so far. I did consult with our technology provider, and where we are at right now, there are a lot of applications still sitting there that haven't been vetted. They're all in Kansas City, and for the Clay County portion, they're all Kansas City residents. And if you recall, we initially got these funds, they were calculated based on our residents outside of Kansas City. We opened it up to serve Kansas City Clay Canyons because we thought it was the right thing to do, and making sure no duplication, of course. So that's another, another thing to think about, is Kansas City asked for more funds and who we are going to be serving with these, with these dollars. But we have essentially, we've served 565 households, and there are roughly that much in the queue, still waiting. But again, the question is, how much will Kansas City pick up? How much are even going to qualify? How much are duplicates, et cetera? Another thing I'll say is that the reality of the situation is, we have become more and more aware recently of fraud attempts with this program. Fortunately, we've caught them, because they're pretty obvious, the attempts of, you know, fake landlords trying to abuse this program, and they've been reported to the U.S. Treasury. But I think we're getting to a point where that's becoming more and more of a case, it's becoming more and more the case where we're seeing someone who's already been served by the state, or already been served by the city, and so it's becoming more and more difficult. So I think, again, we've spent $2.8 million, we have one and a half left. I would like, with the commission's direction, but please, I'll stop talking here and open up for discussion from the commission. I would want us to focus on finishing off 1.0 and getting rid of that 40% of 2.0 before the end of March, and focusing on that. I think that's where we're at, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and certainly we want to, I think the commission would certainly express its gratitude towards all the staff that's been involved in administering that program, you and your office in particular, of course, and also to United Way and our other partners who helped in the distribution of this. You know, having been through the distribution of CARES Act funding and now through this, and as we are approaching the ARPA money, I've got to tell you, I think that the county has done an immensely better job in the administering of this process as far as compared with the CARES Act programming. Was happy to see the money in the CARES Act program going to where it was needed, but the process that you just outlined, that we have been using on the rental relief program, I think has a lot more transparency and a lot better safeguards in it as far as our ability to use that money in a way that it was meant to be used. And I do take your point that, you know, certainly the need has been, a lot of the need has been alleviated, and we seem to be, the need right now seems to be focused, if I understood you correctly, almost exclusively in the Kansas City portion of Clay County.
So our technology provider confirmed that we have no applications from a resident in Clay County outside of Kansas City. So if anyone's listening in the public and you're someone outside of Kansas City, I'd encourage you to apply.
Certainly.
ClayCountyMo.gov/ERAP, but that's the situation right now.
Something I think also that it's, that I kind of take away generally from what you're saying is that, and this is something I think that we can take some pride in, and that is, we seem to be experiencing a higher degree of resiliency up here in the Northland, up here in Clay County, as far as those people who needed help being able to bounce back faster than some other areas of metro areas. So I think, I'm inclined to think that we seem to pretty much fulfilled what our obligation was, as you say, at 75%, pretty much, you know, head of the, head of the pack as far as counties go. So the idea of just essentially winding this program down and freeing up those funds for those areas that may require more help than we do, sounds like a reasonable and responsible thing to do. Further discussion, Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for the update on the information. Just want to agree with Commissioner Ulte, very grateful for how efficiently we've been able to distribute these funds out. Did you mention that the state of Missouri, at the end of September, was at 18%?
This article, and it's from the U.S. Treasury's dashboard is where the data is from, it was, as of the end of September, 18%. But I mean, they got $323.7 million, right? And so again, when we, you know, when we make these comparisons, let's be clear that it's, you know, it's a little difficult to make that, so it's a lot more than our 3.6, but...
Well, sure, but yeah, I bet it, on a per capita basis, my guess is it's pretty, you know, there's a lot more people, obviously, across the state. So is all of the potential additional funding from the state of Missouri from their pool of money?
So it appears, so Treasury, Treasury recommends that when possible to seek it internally, from your own state, keep it within the state. That's Treasury's recommendation. But Treasury before the state, before MHDC, approached us and said, how much do you want? Submit it, and they're doing a nationwide sweep to reallocate. So within MHDC approached us, and what Treasury allows is a voluntary reappropriation process, and so that, in that way, it would be all from the state. So I think that would be the way it would happen if we did go down that path. So I think what's going to go to Kansas City and Jackson County and St. Louis most likely would be from the state.
Okay. And do we have any sense of like what the maximum is available from the state, or, and how much flexibility exists in terms of how much we can request? You mentioned Kansas City's requested 15 million.
That's why I heard just today. I do not have those numbers in front of me as far as how much the state has. I would say it's roughly, I mean, if they've done 18%, 323 million, you know, you're roughly 260 million, and so 30 of that is, you know, is what, and all along, Kansas City and St. Louis have been asking for the state's funds. And to be clear, to be fair, they did allow, they already are serving all jurisdictions. We have a clearinghouse stated based to ensure no duplication, so they're already serving our residents, but these cities want, you know, the funds directly to manage themselves, so.
Gotcha. So we've served just over 500 families, is that right?
That's correct. We've served 565.
565. And then you mentioned that that is similar to the number that are in the queue right now.
It is. Let me get that here. Yeah, I was just told five, over 500.
Okay.
From Kansas City.
And do we have any way of knowing or sense of whether or not additional applicants will be coming forward in the next several months?
I think that's an unknown. Yeah, I, you know, not sure on that.
Gotcha. And in terms of, so you mentioned we're at about 2.8 million out, out the door, and we've got about 1.5 million left. So I mean, my first thought is, obviously, 2.8 million is close to twice as much as we have left, and so if we've got a similar number in the queue as we've already expended, I mean, that would tend to suggest it's not going to be enough, unless, are we expecting Kansas City, since these are predominantly and possibly exclusively Kansas City, for Kansas City to cover all these folks?
Yeah, and they would. They would, and/or the state could as well, if we were not to receive any new funds. I would say, I mean, what's confusing to me when I got that number is, we were told when we opened up to Kansas City initially, that that was the number, and it hasn't been exactly how that played out, right? Not all those folks came over into, be served by Clay County, so I think, I think that estimate's a bit too high, and I would think it would be a lot less, because Kansas City would pick up a good, a good share of those. Numerous are going to be ineligible and just declined. Some are duplicates, some could be potential frauds, so it's not going to be the full amount.
Yeah, I got you, and that seems very likely to me as well, as long as we're sure that Kansas City's going to pick them up, and if we were to accept some additional funds at this time, just, just in case we do need more than the 1.5 million left, is there downside associated with doing that, or is it just a matter of in March, when March rolls around, that we have to give those funds back to Treasury?
Yeah, I think that would be the primary downside, really, is just, well, it's another grant that has to be accounted for. Well, it'd be part of the same grant, but I think really just, that's, for me, that's my concern, just from an operational, you know, standpoint, is get to the end of March, you've asked for X amount more in 1.0, you need to spend 50% of that and, you know, 500,000 of our, of our 2.0. Just based on our spend rate over six months, I'd be leery of getting a letter from U.S. Treasury saying, you know, give us back money, I just don't, I don't want, I don't want that to happen for us.
I got you, but just to clarify, there isn't any kind of penalty or anything like that, right? If we asked for another million from the state of Missouri, and it turned out we didn't need that million, we would just, at some stage later, perhaps in March, refund that money to the feds?
Yeah, I don't know what Treasury will determine at the end of March, how they want to reallocate 2.0. I mean, this is the process they've set up for 1.0. I don't know if they do it the same way at the end of March. It's up to Treasury to define, so, yeah.
Got it. And then in terms of whether or not Kansas City would pick up all of the Kansas City folks, and when you say that there's nobody left in the queue who isn't Kansas City, is that because every application from Clay County that isn't Kansas City has been dealt with, either with funds or...
As of now, yes.
So in terms of knowing for sure whether or not the 500 or so Kansas City households, do we have certainty that Kansas City will be covering those folks if we don't continue participation?
I think it would behoove us to make that known to Kansas City. I know in our meetings, we do so, we, you know, speak with their housing department directly about what we're doing. We've worked together on how to do reporting. I've worked with both Jackson County and Kansas City, so I'm familiar with those entities, and we can, we can make them aware, and like I said, United Way is coordinating for all three.
Right.
So now that, you know, once they know, you know, they can communicate that as well. So I think, yeah, I think that would be understood by them.
Gotcha. Okay, I appreciate the discussion, thanks.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments to join the discussion with?
I do, thank you. Yes. Okay, so for starters, I want to thank you and all your team for everything they've done with this, because this has been huge, and making sure all this money gets out into our community where it needs to be. So regarding the timeline of when we would have to get the new money, what does that look like? When would we, when would we have to do that application process? When's the cutoff for that?
They have not given a, any deadline onto paperwork. It's very, very kind of open-ended, you know, also is the fact of how much you should, you should request, so. No, I'm not aware of any deadlines to submit those requests, either Treasury or MHDC.
Okay, so we could just focus on getting the people in our queue, getting the rest of the money out there, you know, by the end of March, just work in that direction as you've proposed, and if for some reason more money needs to be reallocated, we could go back and ask for money. There's no like set timeline where it's like, well, you've missed your chance, and now no more money can come into Clay County.
I think that's fair, I think that's accurate. There's also a provision in 2.0 where if you get, you've spent 75% or you have 75% approved applications, you can request your other 60% tranche, because we only have 40% right now, so that's, you know, something, something else out there. But you're, but you're right, no, I mean, there's no, there appears to be no deadline for the 1.0 reallocation.
Okay, so we could just move forward then, and then maybe we'll just come back, you know, and just have another, another update, and just see where we're at, and if, and if for some reason we get a lot of applications that come in, and we have a lot of families that are in need, we could, we could move forward with getting more money, but...
I think that, I think that's accurate, yeah. I can do that, yeah.
All right. Well, of course, I take your expertise, as you guys have been handling this so well, so you, I appreciate your, the update and all the information today, so.
I just had one follow-up. Commissioner Carpenter talked about whether or not the Clay County-Kansas City residents would be served. Right now, the way it sits, the Clay County-Kansas City residents is, in fact, are kind of double, double-covered, I guess. We can cover them, or the city of Kansas City can cover them. It could work both ways. So they, they have, they could go to either county or the city and be able to participate. If, if it goes to where Kansas City is just taking care of, which is the way it started, where Kansas City was just taking care of Kansas City, Clay County, we were taking care of the residuals, so I guess what I'm kind of taking the long way around to saying is, Kansas City's responsibility to administer this program to citizens of Kansas City, Clay County, will not have changed regardless of our actions. We are just using the money that we have because we seem to have more funds than we were, than we expended, than we might have expended. We had the ability to come in and to make sure that Kansas City, Clay County citizens did not go wanting. Is that pretty much the, is accurate? I mean, what we do or don't do does not affect Kansas City's responsibility to their citizens.
I think, yeah, no, I think that's true for sure. That stays the same, and the only reason we're aware of these applications, frankly, is we made the decision at the start to work with the same technology provider as Kansas City, and they've been, you know, excellent, and I think that's kind of the reason for our, our success, right? And so, and, and yeah, I mean, yeah, so, and the state is still going to have some dollars left, too, and that's primarily where they've been, been serving, so, yeah, I think so. So there'll still be the state and the city.
I think you're right. I think the decision to, to go with United Way and their partners was, which was the same obvious route that Kansas City went, allowed us to take advantage of some efficiencies. And also, one of the things that you'd mentioned was that, as the program goes on, there's more and more incidences, at least that are, that are rising to awareness, that involve people trying to basically double-dip between jurisdictions. The fact that, that we used the same system and the same vendors as Kansas City, I would hope would have, to some degree, reduced that possibility significantly, I would think.
It does, for sure, so they control where it's assigned, and so that's, that's very helpful, yep.
And that also helps, you know, should we, should it go to just a Kansas City program at some point, that allows for that transition to also work well. So I think the, the decision to, to essentially partner to some degree with Kansas City was a good one, as far as the flexibility in administering the program, and as we adjust where we're at, I think that, that's given us a lot more of a nimble ability to react to situations as we go. Okay? Any further questions or discussion? Okay. I would ask, I don't see anybody from the public who is here to discuss, so thank you very much. That brings us to public hearings, there are none. Our consent agenda, there aren't unlisted today. That brings us to our regular agenda. Mr. Administrator, that brings us to 2021-304, will you proceed?
Commissioners, 2021-304 is a request to approve the 4379 form required by the Missouri Department of Revenue. This is a request from the auditor, and I will allow or ask if Auditor Hurlberg has further comment.
Please proceed.
Yes, Commissioners, Victor Hurlberg, again, Clay County Auditor. 2021-304 resolution is just an annual update for the Missouri Department of Revenue's Form 4379 to allow us to access sales data, which we need in order to process TIF payments back to the districts. We did this earlier in the year, but we only did that because of personnel changes. This is an annually required form in order for us to access it for the next year.
Very well. Are there any questions of the auditor on this issue?
No questions, thanks.
No, thank you.
Is there a motion, oh, excuse me, we don't need motions in this meeting. I don't see this as the expenditure of money or anything like that. I would suggest that this might fit onto our consent agenda next week.
I agree.
Yes.
Very well. 2021-304 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-306, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-306 is a request to approve reimbursement of health insurance claims that have been paid by the county and to get a reimbursement of those expenses from the ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is another request from the auditor, and Auditor Hurlberg remains at the podium.
Please proceed.
Thank you, yes, Victor Hurlberg, again, Clay County Auditor. So I'm excited about this one here, Resolution 2021-306. During our annual, you know, negotiations for our health care plan, it came up in conversation about any claims we've paid from our self-insurance fund due to COVID. And so we reached out to our health insurance company and requested that figure since March 3rd, 2021, and certainly medical care, medical expenses according to the American Rescue Plan Act, our eligible expenses for us to recover, and so we identified that amount of $168,387. And so with your approval, essentially what would happen is my office will reimburse our self-insurance fund that amount from the rescue plan and build that up a little bit, so that's essentially what I have here.
Thank you very much, and it looks as though the documentation certainly is here, which obviously is something that is always the case when you're involved in these things. We certainly appreciate that. I'm happy we're able to get a little bit of the money back on this, well, a substantial amount of money, quite honestly, to help make the county whole after the COVID-19 impact on our, on our budget and what we... the county whole after the COVID-19 impact on our, on our budget and what we end up spending to run, run the county. Are there any questions of the auditor?
No, no questions.
No, thank you.
Okay. This is essentially a transfer between funds, so I'm not sure if, I think we could probably use this on a consent. Does anybody have any concerns about this being on consent?
I do not.
I see head nods all the way around, so unless there's an objection, 2021-306 will appear on next week's consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Auditor. That brings us to 2021-301. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-301 is a request for a transfer within funds. This is a request from Parks, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz is here for further comment.
Please proceed.
Hi, good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is a funds that is already appropriated and has been approved by you for the 2021 budget year. This is just asking that we transfer funds from other line items into our water and sewer line item, the appropriate line item that these bills would be paid for, in the amount of $12,000, so we can continue paying the water bills for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator on this issue?
No, thank you.
No, thanks.
Okay. Does, once again, I mean, this is just transferring within a fund. Consent worked, or does that give anybody heartburn?
I'm comfortable with that.
Good with me.
Very well. If there is no objection, 2021-301 will appear on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-302. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-302 is a request to approve a revocable event license. This is for Special Olympics, Missouri. It is to approve the annual polar plunge, which takes place, as you might suspect, in polar weather in January. This is a request, an annual request from Parks, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz has further comment.
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is a request from the Special Olympics to hold their polar plunge on January 28th and 29th. This would be the second year that they are asking for us to hold this event. It used to be held at, and I believe I'm being correct, in Lawnview Lake for many, many years, and they moved it up to Smithville last year. They seem to be pleased with the accommodations up there, and they're asking to return again. This license approves that they do set up on January 26th and 27th to get ready for the event, and then the event is actually held on the 28th and 29th.
If we approve this, does this require me at any time to jump into ice cold water in the middle of January?
Yes.
I think we need to table this.
Just you.
Typically, as the Presiding Commissioner, that is the first jumper.
I don't mind that so much. It's just being weighed down with the cinder blocks that bothers me. Well, I am, you know, obviously, this is a more than worthy cause. I'm happy to see that we are able to bring this up to Clay County. I, I think the more time goes along, I think more and more people in the area will realize this is a great place for them to hold their events. And certainly, we appreciate the fact that they were pleased enough with last year's event that they would like to, to hold that up here in Clay County once again, and hopefully for many years to come.
We certainly hope so. We're excited that they asked to come back again this year.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission for the Deputy Administrator?
No, it sounds like a great event. I do want to add that I support doing that, so I don't know if we want to leave it on regular so that we can maybe add a little amendment on there, make that contingent on your participation, but.
You will not be recognized again. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. No, no questions. And no, this is a great cause, and I'm, I'm really glad they came back to here, to Clay County. So, and I am all for that. I think Commissioner Nolte should definitely get in that water, so.
That comment is especially disturbing coming from the Pro-Tam.
I think he should.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. There's a certain amount of stop digging, Jerry. With that, I think we will put this on consent, if there are no objections, particularly because it would cut off any possibility of amendments. Thank you very much. That brings us to 2021-303. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-303 is a request to approve a renewal of a food establishment permit application required by the Clay County Public Health Center. This is a request from Parks, and Deputy Administrator Kuntz is at the podium for further comment.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. Yes, this is to approve our annual renewal of our food permit. The fee is $239. This specifically covers us for our Camp Branch Marina for coffee, which is very popular with our fishermen at this time of year.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments of the deputy administrator?
No, thanks.
This does involve a pretty modest expenditure of $239, so I think, I think we need to keep this onto a regular agenda, if that is acceptable to everybody?
Fine with me.
Very well. That brings us to 2021-305. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners 2021-305 is a request to approve a petition for a formation of Liberty Hills reorganized Common Sewer District. This is from administration. This is largely a ministerial function. It carries with it no liability, no expense, but it does provide a recognized sewer district the opportunity to ask for further funding and grants that they are currently not eligible for. That's the purpose of the request. Counsel has another comment as well.
And I probably can be maybe the best one to address in a little bit more detail.
Please do.
So this is out of-
Oh, go ahead and identify yourself.
Kevin Graham, County Counselor.
Thank you.
This is out of the Liberty Hills community, approximately plus or minus around 150 homes. Essentially, they're a private sewer district now. They are petitioning to become a, essentially a public sewer district under Chapter 204. Doing so will give them access to better funding, the ability to raise money, to address their aging system, their aging infrastructure, to do repairs, to, to do maintenance. The, the residents of that area have all done this petition. My understanding is there's no one against the petition. We actually have one of the, the residents of the proposed district here, Mr. Shaw, who probably didn't want me to recognize him. If you have any questions for him. And also, the attorney for the district is here, Mr. Sylvia is sitting behind me. Couple things I do want to make sure everybody understands. This is not, I would not call this a purely ministerial function. I think you actually have discretion here under the statute. If you say no, it just dies. So it's not a purely ministerial function in that regard. Certainly, I guess I wouldn't know why we would do that, but certainly that is within your authority. The second thing that would be within your authority is, I think the way it would be set up now is that if approved, ultimately, it becomes a public board with, I think it's called a Board of Directors, and there would be elected members to that board. You could set it up in a way, or prove it in a way that you would appoint instead of there being elections for that. Again, so just wanted to give you an idea of what your authority is. Real quick, the process is, if you approve this, then, then the proposed district will file a petition in Circuit Court, be assigned a judge, and have to put their case on to, to show that it is essentially in the public welfare and is necessary. Assuming the judge would find that to be the case, it would then be put on for vote by the proposed district, and then there would be an election by the proposed district members to actually incorporate this body. And if that were to happen, then, of course, the next step would be to populate the Board of Directors, and they would be off and running as a public body. Did I get it, did I get that pretty good?
Yes.
My take is I should have handed that off to the council right out of the gate.
No.
Deputy Sylvia is my counsel for Liberty Hills Homeowners Association presently, which is a, a former homeowners association function, but for years, they have a permitted sort of treatment plan distribution system, a collection system. And so they have the additional role in running this system. I've been working with their engineer. The proposed area is the same area that's being served. The process was described correctly. We first have to have permission from the county to form this, and then we file a petition with the court to have permission of this and put on our evidence. It might be some of the public interest, and the court creates a system, appoints the board members in a standard term to 3-2-1, so it will come up for election over the law potentially after the initial appointment. And, and that will qualify, they would be a public entity. Currently, Liberty Hills Homeowners Association operates this for both phases of Liberty Hills. It also operates for Meadow Lakes. It also had four homes, so to speak, allocated to the former golf course out there. So this will, and currently Meadow Lakes has no representation. They, they are, they receive services, they pay their bills, but they don't have a member on the Board of Directors of the HOA. So this will also allow them to have representative representation within the operation of the sewer system.
Yeah, that does answer one of the questions I had, and that was how this would interact with the HOA. So that kind of helps give me a little clarity on that.
And I can add further to that. So the HOA operates, they've collected reserves for system expansion maintenance quite, quite big. And once the district is formed, we will give documentation to transfer from the homeowners association to the public sewer district, all of their facilities, their easement rights, and the reserve funds. So it will just step off, continuing to operate as it has, but having more options available for assistance. They, they get assistance from DNR, but this makes them eligible for grant funding for, for reasons, whether that's CDVG, whether it's USDA, whether that's from DNR. We did explore other opportunities, including contacting Liberty, because there's grant money available for regionalization, where we could create a collection system and then contract Liberty to handle treatment. The issue there, and speaking with the regional courts, is distance, cost of connecting, and the topography does not work well. And so we would have lift stations and other additional expenses that we would have to, have to resolve. So that still remains a possibility down the line, if that makes sense. But this just separates the traditional homeowners association functions from the added operation of a sewer system within the district.
I assume that this, that this board, however it's constituted, would be a creature of state statute, and therefore those statutes would, would come into play to, to define the structure of, of, you know, actually, the accountability, the fact that you have to have a treasurer, all of the due diligence required when you're administering funds.
Yes, very similar. I represent a member of public water supply districts. These work very similar to public water supply districts. We are a municipal entity. We file audit reports on an annual basis. There are subject sunshine loan requests, which isn't really the case with regard to the nonmembers that are receiving their services, services from the homeowners association president. They all have a good relationship. They provide the information. That's really a matter of contract and maybe the restrictions.
One of the things that you'd mentioned, I think, or actually, I think counsel mentioned, was that we have essentially two options before, depending on how we would constitute this. And that would be one, to have an elected board. The other would have one that would be appointed, I assume, by the, by the commission, the way we appoint a number of other boards. My question is, locally and throughout the state, is there kind of a, a more dominant of the two options that is in practice right now? And do you just, I'm kind of getting a feel for whether or not, you know, I don't necessarily see a reason to buck the tide, but I'd certainly want to be aware of it.
Yes, it's a traditional for a live state. It's a matter of preference. Some county commissioners want to continue to maintain that control. And, and that might make some sense, at least to me, if this was completely new from the start, if we were establishing totally a sewer system, or we didn't have a, a Board of Directors that currently been in the business of operating this, these ones, I think, originally constructed beginning in the 60s, under the documentation. So right or wrong, they've been in the sewer business as a private homeowners association for 40 or 50 years. And this just gives them more flexibility. And I think they know their system, and they know their expertise. And essentially, it would probably be the members of the Board of Directors, or past boards and directors, that have been involved in the operation of the sewer system, that will be appointed, with, with exceptions. I haven't seen how the district map will be drawn. There will now be representatives from Meadow Lakes that will also be involved as, as a board member, or they have not participated in the operations, although Liberty Hills is anxious to bring some of the expertise that's available through those, which we need to the district.
Mr. Counselor, is there any practical consideration when we look at the two possible methods of populating the board, either by elective process or by appointed process? It seems to me the elective process puts us at a little bit more arms length. Does that provide us any particular advantage as far as liability or anything like that?
I would say probably not from a liability standpoint. You know, being, you know, if they're separately elected, certainly it does put us at more arms length, removes us from maybe some of their day-to-day considerations. You know, obviously, whenever we're dealing with appointed boards, one of the, the key problems that seems to arise is sometimes commissions don't get around to actually appointing people, and boards go, positions go unfilled. And that, that, you know, for, you know, smaller boards and commissions, maybe that's not problematic. But for one that essentially is serving as a, as a public body, you know, it can be more problematic.
Okay. How many people does it, would we decide, when we pass this, how many people would be on the board, or is that already defined and existed?
By the statute, I believe it's five.
I think it's five.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions that you'd like to pose?
Thank you, I do. Is there any opposition to this? I know that would probably be kind of silly if there was a whole bunch.
I'm sorry.
Has there been any opposition to the formation?
There has not been any opposition to this.
Go ahead.
They, they, they have a permitted operator that runs the treatment facility. They have a treatment facility that's approaching 40, 50 years old. They have some upgrades and repairs that we need to make. And they, we're looking to have the opportunities to do that, and we've explored those. This gives them more opportunity to pursue down that path. And so, but there hasn't been no opposition to it.
That's good.
And on that topic, let me jump in also. The way I read the statute, there is a more robust opportunity at the court for that opposition, not necessarily here. Could be, could happen here, of course, but there's certainly a second level, probably a more robust level of, of consideration of this, as well as opposition, that is supposed to happen at the court system.
Good, okay.
Yeah, in the court process, we publish notice, we give actual notice. And anybody that has, wants to file exceptions to the formation of the district, has the opportunity to do so with the Circuit Court, and they have the opportunity, there will be a hearing to review that and take evidence. And if there is opposition, must submit to the Circuit Court Judge that's assigned to the case, and then they will ultimately rule on that, which also gives them right to appeal if they are agreed from the Circuit Court.
Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I know.
And they also have the right, at the election level, to show up and vote against it.
Yes, yes.
We are, we are just the very first gatekeeper here.
No, I was just going to see if there was anybody who was like headstrong, like angry about this, or that's all. But we're good.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No questions, thanks.
You'd, how many people would be in this district again, roughly?
I believe that it's a little over 100 homes. And, and again, right now, it's within Liberty Hills, one home, one vote, all registered voters participate in the election for the district position.
I was looking at the number of signatures on the, and it seems like it's, I wouldn't say unanimous, but it's getting real close. Last question I have is, is this, would this be a body that would be capable of expanding if it deemed necessary?
Yes, there is a procedure. Again, we don't have to come back here. We have to go to the Circuit Court to expand territory. We just need the county permission to come into existence.
So it'd essentially be an annexation? So it would essentially be an annexation type process, roughly speaking?
You survey a territory, and you petition the court, and they add the territory to there, and again, the homeowners within that territory have the right to object. You have to have a sort of number of them make an application for expansion of this sort of this territory.
Okay.
On that topic, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, everyone knows that there's the golf course out there. The golf course has shut down and is not in use. I understand the golf course is actually part of this district, and there's also the potential, you know, we don't know what's going to happen on that land, that if it were to go residential or have multiple users, you know, I think the argument would be that having a public body like this would make that more likely to happen, more beneficial.
Right, yeah, I see what you mean. Actually, I did have one other question. I said that was my last, sorry about that. Would this board have the ability to levy taxes or a fee?
It, so I have to defer to reading the statute. Public water supply districts technically have the ability, none of them do, they are, they, anybody that they do are all revenue bonds that are repaid out of the fees that are generated. They are not general obligation bonds. I'm not aware of it, and I counsel to the RWA, which represents some of our sewer districts, I'm not aware of any district in the state that has that.
Are there any further questions? It's my opinion that since, while I don't see a lot of controversy, but if we're talking about actually creating a governmental entity, it seems as though this would be most appropriate on a regular agenda.
Sure, that's fine with me, yep.
Very good. In that case, twenty twenty-one, three oh five will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to the conclusion of our regular agenda for today. Is there a motion related to the agenda items we have just discussed?
I'll move that we put items twenty twenty-one, three oh three, and three oh five on the regular agenda for next Wednesday, and all remaining items from today's agenda on the consent agenda for next Wednesday.
Motion has been made to place twenty twenty-one, three oh three, twenty twenty-one, three oh five on regular agenda, the remaining items on today's regular agenda to appear on the consent agenda. Discussion? Is there anyone from the, from the public that would care to comment? Seeing none, Commissioner Carpenter, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would care to make any comments on any items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders who would care to comment on any issues not appearing on today's agenda?
Sandy Baldwin, County Clerk, I just have one little thing, I think.
A little bit more into the mic, please.
I think it's very interesting. In twenty twenty, we did approximately one hundred and forty-one sunshines, and we spent almost twenty-three thousand dollars on legal fees for those sunshines last year. This year, we've done one hundred and forty-one sunshines at no cost. We have the clerk staff and the county counselor staff is all on payroll, so we didn't have any, any legal cost on that, and anytime we needed to get ahold of our county counselor, it was very easy to do. We talked it through and knew what we were supposed to do, so I think that's a big plus for the county this year.
Thank you for those comments. I think everybody involved appreciates that. Are there any other office holders who would care to comment on any non-agenda items? Seeing none. Are there any agencies who would like to comment on any items not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I have none, thank you.
That brings us to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Well, I don't have a whole lot today. Apparently, I have the very loud microphone, so brace yourselves. But a little bird told me that our new collector is having her birthday today, so I'd like to wish a very big and very happy, happy, happy birthday to Ms. Barbara O'Reilly.
Very good. Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments you'd like to make this time?
I do not, thank you.
By the way, when I talk about the non-agenda item comments, when I come to Commissioner Comments, I just want the commissioners to know that those comments are not necessarily listed as being non-agenda, so certainly you can comment on whatever you please, within, obviously, within decorum. So I didn't want commissioners to feel as though they had any unreasonable limits on their comments, and that's my comment. So with that, that brings us to approval of the minutes of previous session. Today, we have three, September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, six p.m., October sixth, twenty twenty-one, two p.m., and October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, six p.m., and I'll make sure that I have not left one off. That is correct. Is there a motion related to those, to the minutes of previous sessions?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of previous sessions, September twenty-ninth, the October sixth, and the October thirteenth, as printed.
I'm sorry, all three?
All three of them, all of them.
Gotcha. Motion has been made for the approval of the three sets of minutes of previous sessions that have been presented. Discussion?
No discussion.
Very well, with that, you'll recognize to close, Commissioner Thompson.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
I believe we may have some written reports. Are there any to be submitted today?
Yes, I think before you write down, you have the WPA from the county clerk, and then you have the October, August, July, December reports.
Thank you very much, and it looks as though all commissioners have had those distributed. Are there any other written reports to be presented to the commission at this time? Seeing none. Executive Sessions, we do not have any listed today. That brings us to adjournment. We are adjourned, thank you.